All right, so I'll call the meeting to order at 5:02. A non-public session can be called at any time in accordance with Chapter 91A, Section 32, A, B, C, D, E, or I. And that brings us to public input. And then, so that'll be open at 5:02. And then approval of meeting minutes is the next item on the agenda. I didn't have any comments.
I didn't have any either.
Somebody can watch it through for the minutes.
I had a couple as always.
Yes.
My last name is spelled incorrectly throughout the document. So that's an easy fix, people find. And I just wasn't sure Mr. Andruski's comment about the solar wasn't on the table yet because of the transformers. I'm not exactly sure that was accurate, why we didn't move forward with the solar project.
I'm comfortable with that. That was one of the explanations that transformer could not meet in these. So I'm fine if that one's in there. I'll probably save it.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, committee reports. Policy Committee did not meet last time. Safety and security?
Yes, we met.
Yay!
On May 23rd. I'm feeling very safe. We went over several things. Esther talked about the reunification training that everybody went to. Was there a representative from the school at that?
We had our memorial day ceremony at that same time, so we were here.
Okay, there were about 100 people there from the region, and they talked about...
Becky, you were there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant at the meeting. I apologize, yes, I was at the reunification training. I thought you meant the meeting. I apologize.
Oh, no, the safety committee meeting.
Oh, yes.
You, yeah, no, I was there for you.
Thank you.
And I didn't say anything because I didn't understand. The only thing about Kensington, I didn't understand. We're gonna get to that.
Perfect, but the reunification training, yes, I was there.
Yeah, and so I guess there's a new plan that we will be taking if, should something happen, which it won't. The kids will be reunified out of district, epping, I believe. Okay, so that's the new plan, and I think it makes great sense, actually. Okay, and I'm actually going to volunteer to be one of the reunifiers, since I don't have anybody who's caring where I am dirty anymore. Homeland Security updates, nothing really that involves us at all, just a couple of other schools. Audio enhancements, we don't need. The only thing that really involved Kensington was apparently police and fire radios don't work in our building.
Correct.
Which is problematic.
Yes.
That's the part I couldn't understand because dear Rusty was talking about Rosenkrantz and towers and this and that. And finally, I said to him, I know you're explaining it to me, but I don't understand it. And then he said, well, we're going to get it fixed. But that's the only thing that implicates us. So we were kind of trying to brainstorm some workarounds for right now. We didn't get to anything on that. Other than that, we're in very good shape compared to some of the other schools. That's it.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
All right, Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
No update. We did the evaluation, so we're
Yep.
We're done for now.
Okay, school study update?
And not meeting at the moment.
General correspondence?
We do have a letter that we'll need to go into non-public.
Okay. All right, and then community news?
We can do that in the fall, I think.
Yeah, okay. All right, business and financials?
Okay, so thank you for signing the manifest. So this is the last financial of the year. So we did have an increase of about $22,174 from this month. It was really related to three things, which I listed here in your board pack. We did not have any real change on the revenue side. So did anyone have any questions on the expense change? Okay, so what will hopefully be going back to taxes is the combination of the expense less than plan and the revenue more than plan. So that's that calculation, the annual breakdown corner of the $100,000, $7,000. Did vote for the three trusts, so those would be funded first. And then the balance would hopefully go back to the tax rate. Now, we do have a little bit of expenses left to clear out in June, so we might have some additional expense, or we might go to release some encumbrances. So that will change a little bit. And then we will, I'll send you an email when we have financials over the summer, since we won't be here any week. But the auditors are likely gonna come at the end of the summer, so we'll just have to have you come in at some point to sign the manifest with the like.
Okay.
But I'll let you know when that's happening.
So that's a little bit, or it's close to 162 that's going back to taxpayers?
Right now, that's our projection, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great.
And you can kind of see in the bottom how that compares to other years. It is kind of all over the map between COVID years, non-COVID years. But the average is 65, so we're well above the average.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Molly.
Thanks, Molly.
All right. All right, Principal's report.
I am turning it over to our lovely staff to present the social emotional program action. I think we've seen the process that they went through these last few months of school.
Great.
Getting high tech on you, have a little slideshow for you. So do you both want to introduce yourselves, just to make sure that everyone?
So I'm Kelsey Esklin, I'm the school counselor here.
And Kat, our classroom teacher.
And we are proposing a new social emotional curriculum for the school for next year.
I will try.
So Kelsey, is this the result of the number of different programs you had to choose from?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. Well, sure. Shane, if you can help?
Doing 23.
Sorry, pardon for the interruption. Thank you. So when I started here as counselor eight years ago, KES was using Open Circle. Open Circle was a very consistent social emotional program that every classroom teacher used, had common language throughout the school, so every student was familiar with it, K to five. As we went into COVID, I was recording Open Circle lessons for every class. And then, as COVID ended, Open Circle closed its doors. So I worked hard with Becky and Mr. Andruski of aligning different programs, different curriculums, different lessons to our CAREs competencies that we have here. CARE stands for Cooperation and Collaboration, Advocacy, Resilience, Empathy, and Solving Problems. So I worked hard on pulling multiple different lessons to present to each class. As the years progressed, we also realized we need something more consistent again. We need that common language throughout the school. We need teachers to be involved again, not just having social emotional fall completely on me. We wanted everyone to be included, so they had the same language, the same wherewithal as I did going into the classrooms. So we put together a social emotional learning committee, and we went through about five different curriculums, pros and cons. And we tested different lessons, and we decided on one that we really, really loved, Purposeful People. It is out of the Character Strong curriculum. And so we're gonna show you a quick video to start, and then Kat will give you a little bit more information as to what we did.
Hello, my name is Julie. Welcome to Character Strong's Purposeful People. We're a pre-K through fifth grade curriculum designed to teach and integrate social skills, emotion regulation skills, and character development. We do this by starting with the foundational character traits you see here along the bottom. We combine those, teach them alongside skills like pro-social behaviors, executive functioning, and emotion regulation skills. All of this is designed to lead students to these three outcomes, be kind, be strong, and be well. Here in our curriculum site, I can see nine character traits at my fingertips. I can click into one and see a month's worth of lessons right here in front of me, starting with a staff challenge, a family focus, believe in partnering with families. I can even download a newsletter right here to send home. And then I've got five activities that I can use throughout every single week. I've got a start activity, a connect activity to help build relationships and strong classroom culture. This grow lesson is a chance to dive deeper into those skills like conflict resolution or executive functioning. Respond section allows me to choose from a brain booster, a mindful moment, or a series of circle prompts every week. And finally, an exit activity helps me thoughtfully reflect on the learning and the challenge to take that learning with me. And click into campus resources and show you nine pages full of strategies to help you take this learning campus-wide. I've got implementation supports, getting started videos, even an overview for your staff. This additional tools page is full of resources for download, including reading announcements and student recognition tools. I've also got libraries, like a video library, a music playlist library, and of course, a book library. Staff pages, family pages, even resources for the playground. Truly thought of everything. We hope you will join us for a demo where you can dive deeper into all of this and more, or you could book a call to find out how you can bring this to your campus or district. We can't wait to meet you.
As you can see, it has a lot included.
A lot!
She's not part of it.
So we, the committee first took some sample lessons from Purposeful People, and we taught it across every grade level. And I got some great feedback, and the kids really enjoyed it. Were asking to do the activities more. And then we went and visited Stratum, where they do Purposeful People, and were able to talk to a few different teachers about how they structure it throughout their day, and saw one teacher teach a block of time. And they talked a lot about how positive it was and what a great experience it was. So Purposeful People, it's built to work across all the grade levels, all of them focusing on the same principles of be kind, be strong, and be well, but looking at more specific things that will, that are beneficial for each specific grade and what they need, which we really liked about it.
And as they talked about the five different parts of each lesson, what's great about this curriculum is you don't have to do all five parts every single day. You can break it up across the week. So Monday, you start with the start lessons, and that just sparks your classroom discussion for the week. Maybe it's a song you sing, maybe it's a quote. The connect lessons are more interactive and have the whole class working together. The grow lessons are the detailed social emotional instruction. And it really helps put the character traits, the nine character traits they mentioned, into practice. Respond is for the calming activities for emotional regulation, or the brain boosters. And you can use these at any time during the day. Sometimes after lunch, students either need a calm down moment or a brain booster to get their energy back up. And then the exit activities are great for closing out the day or the week, just circling back to the prompts that were brought up in the morning.
So the nine character traits that shows respect, responsibility, gratitude, empathy, perseverance, honesty, cooperation, courage, and creativity. So the way that it would be structured is we would, school-wide, pick one that would be focused on each month. And so we, based on what we heard at Stratum, they do like a big, like a very big deal, like here's next month's trait. And so we plan to do the same thing, get a lot of, I think it's very enthusiastic about it. And so you focus on it across the whole school for the whole month, and then you do a fun little closing, and then you move on to the next one, which we felt like really supported our purpose of wanting things to be very school-wide. And it gives a lot, so it gives a lot of tools for emotional regulation, conflict resolution, and it's still at all, everything is focused on those three basic outcomes of be kind, be well, and be strong that we can keep coming back to.
Is it up to each teacher to determine how it's implemented across the respective classes?
Go ahead.
I would say that's what we noticed in Stratum. I think that's what we've discussed, of kind of what fits best for your class or for your timing. Like, there was some, one teacher who broke it up and did morning meeting all week. She did a different piece of it. And there was another teacher who had a big block in the afternoon and that would just go through the whole thing. And they both found that that worked better for their classes. So I think it would just be whatever we find fits best.
Yeah, but we've also heard other teachers who do the morning meeting and then do the ending. So it's the whole cohesive day. Another part that we really liked about this program was talking about the tree of choice for the conflict resolution. Each class will talk about this, of how big is the problem? Those are the roots of the tree. And then you name your emotions of the, I feel upset when you didn't play with me, or reasons, giving it a name. And then the three are the branches, and you get to make a choice. So I do a lot of conflict resolution and problem solving across grade levels. And this is, again, a really consistent image that is, will be present in every lesson for every kid. So having, again, giving them that same language of, oh, let's check in with our roots real quick, let's check in with our heart, and then go to our branches. So every student would have that image.
And there are different versions of this image across the different grade levels. So it's the same basic, but it adds more details as the students grow older. There's also a home-to-school connection, which we really liked, where we could, either the teachers or the principal can send home family newsletters so that all the parents, everyone knows what we were talking about in school, and that can continue that carryover.
Mm-hmm. And again, this would have the library effect, so parents could check out a book at the library and read together as a family. And what we like also about this curriculum is it's data-driven. So it does work. There is improved student interactions with teachers and peers, especially with the teachers leading the curriculum and the lessons as well. It's more connection between them. Improved student behavior, reduced disciplinary action, improved student engagement showing because there's less behavior correction. And then increase understanding and display of character traits. So we are proposing to the board that this be our new social emotional curriculum going forward. The social emotional committee was really, really excited. When we left Stratum, we were giddies. We could not wait to get this program into our school. With it being a small school, we want that focused family feel, and Purposeful People looks great. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, you can make a motion per policy IGD.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion per policy IGD to approved, to approve.
The adoption of the new
The adoption of
Purposeful People.
Purposeful People. Does anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I just asked the cost, and also if we wanted to do it at a fund balance.
Nope, can't do it at a fund balance. We'll call it in next year's budget. It has to be in this year's budget to be able to do it for fund balance, so it'll be in next year's budget.
Ms. Roll does have the cost.
I just wasn't sure if I wanted to.
Nope, no, we'll get you the cost, we'll put it in the budget.
It depends on what level of professional development support you choose for teachers.
Now, the old program that we had is done.
It is done.
Retired, so we can't do that. But any, in terms of comparison from the old cost versus the new one? Do we have that, or any idea of what that looks like?
I don't have a specific number in my head. I, I would suspect that this is more expensive. There's a lot more digital access to tools and resources with this program. It's a lot more comprehensive than what we were using before.
Okay.
I think the basic program is about $5,000. And then you have different levels of professional development and access to online things that it could be $2,000 more, it could be $4,000 more. So I think the basic program is about five, and then you add on a professional development and that sort of thing.
So do we have a sense of whether or not we're gonna go with basic, or we're gonna choose one of those other options, or is that to be determined?
I would like to have some professional development included. I'm not sure if we need the premium package. But I do, I would like there to be professional development for the teachers.
Sure.
So maybe a mid-level.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
I believe we had, when we originally thought that we could use end-of-year funds, I think we had originally budgeted up to $8,000 for the program. So that would be my target, not to exceed what you had up
Okay.
discussed last time.
Okay. Great. Sounds good, and thanks for the presentation and the hard work. Appreciate it.
The staff's really excited to have something in the building again that's consistent, the language. Yeah.
Awesome. All right, so that brings us to new business, NSLP equipment grant?
Yeah, before I do that, real quick, I just want to introduce Dr. Renee Bennett. So Dr. Bennett, we're doing a little shifting next year at the central office. Dr. Bennett will have two boards next year, Kensington will be one of them. So glad to have her here, so she's gonna take over. I'll be down to two boards, so that'd be nice. But I know she's gonna be taking over and be in great shape. So thanks for attending, Dr. Bennett. The NSLP grant, it just letting you know, HUD took away our milk cooler because of volume, so we did get a grant so that we could pay for the cooler, so we can provide milk and keep milk cold. So just wanted you to have that information in there, that it did not come out of a budget, it was a grant.
Okay.
The strategic planning board member, we will start strategic planning for next year in September, looking for monthly meetings and one board member for each board to be part of that board meeting. The majority of the first two to three will be virtual. And then once we bring Isobar, who will be conducting the strategic plan, they'll be doing some in-house onsite with our goal of wrapping it up and presenting to the public by March, so that this current contingency of board members can go through the full strategic plan. We don't want to have new board members come on and not be part of the process. So looking for one board member, if someone is interested to serve on that committee from Kensington.
I mean, I'm happy to, because the, I think some of the board, the committees that I was on sort of wrapped.
Okay.
Unless Cheryl, if you want to, okay.
Just because I'm retired, Kyle.
That's fine, yeah, and you have enough in your plate, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Stefan.
I'll take the next one, Stefan.
You got it.
Permission for the superintendent to hire over the summer. If we were unfortunately to lose a certified staff member, we're asking that the superintendent has permission to hire. Again, we'd go through the same vetting process, we'd interview, check references, bring them in. We do all interviews before we make recommendations to you through the superintendent's office. But to try to get the board together to make that recommendation is often difficult in the summertime, so we often ask in our June meeting for that permission. So if you do, I just need a vote on that.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve permission for the superintendent to hire over the summer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And Chris, if I recall correctly, that's consistent with what we've done the past
Yep, yes, yep.
Yeah, okay.
In your packet, we had a board meeting scheduled and worked on this with Dr. Bennett. Dr. Bennett loves board meetings so much that she serves on her own board and lead, so a little change in the day of the week to Mondays, because that could help fit into her schedule. So wanted to present that and see if that makes any challenges for Kensington to meet on Mondays for the majority of their meetings next year.
The only thing that I thought of after we had chatted up this is, that is, at the same time that our selectmen meet, and so there have been years where a member of the board does attend selectmen's meetings. So I just didn't know if that would conflict with having both meetings at the same time.
Do we know what month, what week they meet?
There's
Because if it wasn't the first Monday?
Right.
It is the first Monday of the month.
The select board meeting?
Oh, no, that's the one I
Yeah, it's what you proposed.
So if we go off weeks of that would be fabulous. Do you want to keep going, and I can pull up the selectmen's meeting?
Well, we could also do this. You could also approve the first date of September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, that doesn't conflict. And then we can do the research on that, and if it's not conflicting, so we're comfortable with that as well. That way, at least we can have Renee get it into her schedule, and that could be the first item for business.
The selectmen's are the first and third Mondays of the
Oh, okay.
You can also, I mean, is anybody attending selectmen's meetings right now?
I don't think we did this last, this past year. Do they invite us? How does that work?
It depends on the board that sits in some boards, have a representative that sits at selectmen's.
Yeah.
We never did.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't come across an issue with that in the past couple of years.
Yeah, it doesn't really seem
But I go with Chris's suggestion. Let's right now just move on that Tuesday, and we'll
I mean, Mondays are fine with me. I don't
Yeah, I don't have an issue, but the safest play, if you want to do that, Cheryl, I'm fine with that, just approving that one day.
Right, let's approve that.
I don't have an issue with the other days regardless, so.
I don't care either way, really.
Right, Dr. Bennett, we have the first agenda items, get a schedule, so.
What information would the board need to order to make a decision? Is there a negotiation you want from me?
I don't think so. They just have to decide if they want to conflict with
If we can agree that nobody's gonna go to the selectmen meeting, I'm all in favor of just approving this right now.
Yeah, I mean, should one of us, like, check in with a select board member and just see if we've been missing, like, if they, do you know what I mean?
I don't know. I mean, like I said, 10 years, we never went.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
So let's just make the safe play then.
Okay.
And we'll agree on September date, and then the rest will just TBD.
We'll check in with them, just to make sure that what we've been doing is okay, and
So just to be clear, there's no action items from me? You go check in with the selectmen, and then you'll, someone will let me know?
Yeah, sounds good.
Vote on that, Chris?
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the first board meeting date of the next school year, September 3rd, 2024, Tuesday at 6:00 PM. And then the rest will be decided at a later date, or at that date, or maybe at that date, we should say. All right, anybody second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. In your packet is a draft, which is pretty consistent to the last two years of monthly data discussions. Again, trying to bring in all the different functions that you have in regards to data as it relates to policy and also the budget as a role of the board member. I didn't know if there's anything that you are not seeing on here that you'd like to see, or if you're comfortable with this. And again, this can be readdressed from month to month, but we put the major topics in there. That happen in there?
Okay.
I can go, Chris?
Yeah.
That looks fine with me.
So, Chris, just a question, so we approved, is it Purposeful People? All right, so
We adopted them.
Yeah. So, so I imagine January would be a good time to review and kind of see how things are going at that point, because we'll have it up and running.
Yep.
I didn't notice anything that was missing. I did notice that there's two blocks for a special ed, so I didn't know if that was purposefully done, or if maybe that's a duplicate and we can add something else there.
Yeah, I think that's a duplicate. I don't think we usually do that twice.
Okay.
So we can shift.
Yeah, if we could shift October to technology. If you're comfortable with that.
That sounds great.
Sounds great. I have to mention, we already have that, we added that special carve-out this year for, is that for wireless specific, or is it technology?
It was wireless and then switches and access points that are going in over summer.
Okay. Yeah, just trying to make the connection between the two, I think it's a good topic to add.
Yeah, because we'll roll out our plan to replacement for staff and students that would, so you can get that consistent message across the SAUs.
Okay, perfect.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, where's that put us?
The last one was just lunch prices. Ms. Roll, did you get a recommendation from Ms. Pollard on any increases for lunches for next year?
We had conversation about it. There wasn't a specific number. I think the conversation was something like, we could increase it, we could double the price and still not be making even at the end of the year. So I just think with the cost of food and other expenses, we're having a difficult time.
Yeah, does it ordinarily go up every year? I know we raised it last year. It kind of depends.
Not always, just sometimes. I mean, any little bit would help, but it's not going to cover the score in the red floor.
Federal government does give you suggestions each year
Okay.
on raising because of your reimbursement back.
Yeah.
So what did we get from, we had gotten a recommendation from Jean, Molly, on where most people were at. I think the high school is the only one that wasn't doing an increase.
I know, last night, Exeter Elementary increased, there's 10 cents, I think it was, per meal. I know last night Exeter Elementary increased, there's 10 cents, I think it was, per meal. The high school and maybe middle school weren't making any changes.
Only because they had a large surplus that they had to spend out.
Correct. But high school, middle school, they conserve à la carte and that's where you make the money. So they always end in a positive balance. The elementary is negative.
Right.
But I can look to see if I can pull up what I recently.
We didn't increase in Swayze. We only went up from breakfast at Swayze because the, the cost was more significant for breakfast than it was for lunch.
Yeah.
But I believe it was 10 cents to 25 cents was the average of price increase.
It seems reasonable to go up.
How much though?
To reflect.
Where are we currently at with that?
So remember that the past couple of times we've talked about this and had increases, we've at least had a frame of reference to kind of go up to like when the other schools were at three something and we were, it was a little bit of an easier call at that point because we knew that we would go up to manage it or else we would be an outlier.
Right.
Not saying that we have to follow line with everybody else, but.
Right.
I think the other thing, it sparked sort of a larger conversation just about the lunch program in general and the model in which we're serving. And so I, I think it's, I don't think the cost of things are going to be going to down. And so I think there needs to be kind of that bigger conversation about our lunch program and model and. So I did find being open Jean that I then corresponded with her. So I believe that she was thinking that Brentwood would be at $3.05. East Kingston and Kensington at $3.25. Stratum, $3.40.
We're at $3.25 right now.
Okay.
And then Main Street and Lincoln Street at $3.15. Now, Main Street and Lincoln Street are able to keep their so low because they share the food service director cost with the cooperative. So the cooperative pays like 80 to 85% of the director. Exeter Elementary pays like 50 to 20%.
Okay.
So they share a person, whereas here we have full-time staff and that's part of the food service cost.
That we share with East Kingston, the director.
Yes, that we share with East Kingston.
So we share with one other school.
So has this been brought up to East Kingston for their employee yet?
East Kingston did not raise the lunch price fraction. What did you say? She said she'd be at $3.25?
We're at $3.25 right now. Breakfast right now is $1.90, lunch is $3.25, and milk is $0.50.
Which is the same as East Kingston's $3.25. And I believe Jean had collected this information from all the food service directors. So assuming East Kingston and Kensington didn't change.
The amount that's not covered by the parents paying, that is just in the budget?
Comes out of our budget.
Comes out of our budget.
General fund. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I guess it just seems more fair to raise the prices and have the people using it pay for it, but I don't know.
Do we have to make a decision on this now ahead of next school year or is this something we could?
Usually inform parents before the school year starts. But it sounds like if you didn't increase it, at East Kingston and we share the same service and same lunch director, I'd make the recommendation not to change. So it's consistent.
To stay with. Okay.
And then as Becky said, we would do a deep dive into the lunch service program. We're, we have a meeting set up this summer anyways to look at that.
Okay, so it could be something that we look at for next year.
I mean, I guess hearing the comment about doubling it and it still wouldn't make it then, I wonder, I mean, it just seems like more of a, a full review would be worthwhile as opposed to making it 10 cent or even 25 cent.
Okay, yeah.
I believe we always ask in June, because I believe it's part of the food service application that we have to complete annually to be able to serve food at our school.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you for the conversation.
All right. All right, brings us to old business, ad hoc budget committee.
Yes. We met.
Yep.
Molly and I, we have homework to do. Do you want to talk about our meeting?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, I thought it was a good discussion. We had me, Becky, two parents of students and then member of the public, Mr. Brandano. Covered a lot of ground. We talked about the data that Al had shown previously. And we kind of collectively talked about what the budget process looks like now. And in order to figure out, you know, how we could bend the curve, so to speak, or think about lowering taxes in the future, it was brought up that we should be focusing, or we should try and focus in on what the drivers have been over the past, call it 10 to 20 years. And the, the data that was presented showed over the past 20 years, there's been something like 150% increase in the tax burden. So coming out of the meeting, we were trying to, or as part of the meeting, we were trying to figure out what data we might be able to gather in order to figure out what the, the drivers are behind that. And then if we could get something that would help us identify what the drivers are, we could then move on to the next step, which would be, how can we solve for this or what can we do to hopefully bring down some of those drivers or, or address those drivers? So we talked about potentially getting a snapshot of budget data for maybe the 10 years or so.
Basically the pie for the last 10 years.
Yeah. And by looking at that pie, if you pick out, you know, for the first five years, there's a, a big slice of pie and that, that shrinks or that goes the opposite direction, that might help give us the information we need to identify those drivers. That's at least the, the thought based on what we looked at for data that was in front of us at the meeting.
So that was homework for us to, I, I mean, I, I dig through my files, probably have the last 10 years of pies. I don't know if you have them all electronically, but that's what we, that's our homework for the meeting.
Okay.
And we can talk more about that.
Yes. Lots of pieces from a few different systems.
Yeah. The other piece that was somewhat related and has more of a data spin to it, Mr. Brandano was talking a lot about cost per student and that was one of his big indicators. And we had a couple of charts that showed cost per student, say 29,000, I think it was somewhere in that range. There was an ask about identifying exactly what makes up that 29 or so thousand. So, yeah, just trying to think about whether or not that cost per student would be helpful versus the overall budget and what the drivers would be reflective there. It's just another piece of information that maybe the detail will help us, maybe it won't. But we just wanted to try and get that.
Kind of a definition, what is the formula that makes the cost per, per student?
Yeah, exactly.
Could throw one other piece for you all to consider. And look at how the funding formula for public education from the state of New Hampshire, on what is adequate and inadequate and how that impacts taxes.
Okay.
Because that is a huge impact to what we're not receiving that would offset our tax rate.
Meaning what money the state is giving us and how that drives the numbers or how that.
And the comparison that you would see in other states and their funding formula. Because your, 85% of our taxes in New Hampshire is real estate-based, which goes back to the schools. The other 15% typically is your town-based. But the funding formula is very different from a town than it is from a school and how we get state aid adequately.
Okay. Got it.
So we can make all those arguments, but I think that needs to be a factor that is also keyed in that without that control and that inadequate funding, we can look at all these drivers and yes, it will go up 150%, but that is a key that has to be part of the.
Yep. Okay.
And I think you also want to add in the level of grants that are received because throughout those are going down then.
Okay.
I can share that with you, just grants and adequacy.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thanks for doing that work. Well, thanks for that input. It's helpful.
When's the next meeting, just so I know when mine will be?
So you and I need to connect. I asked for not this action, our action item not to be done until the end of the month because right now is a busy time for us. So I can't connect with you. We said that we would try to get it out by the end of the month.
In June?
Yes.